Now I will call to order the common council meeting on January 12th, 2021 at 7:31. First up is Pledge of Allegiance. All right, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. All right, roll call please.
Alder Radifrata.
Ipea.
Alder Clouter. Alder Gerhardt.
Here.
Alder Crowsey.
Here.
Alder Maldonado.
Here.
Mayor Richardson.
Here.
Alder Schroeder.
Here.
Alder Strassman. She's raising her hand, she's here. Alder Udell.
Here.
You have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Public appearances and non-agenda items. I do not have anyone for this, right Scott? All right, nothing for that. Going to the consent agenda, is there a motion for consent agenda?
I move approve of the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, Julia, second by Gabriella, is there anything that people want to take out? Sarah?
Yes, thanks. Could we pull, or excuse me, could we also extend Resolution 21, 22, and 23, the headquarters for the fire acceptances to Public Works?
So we'll pull 16, 17, and 18 out first, and then we'll go through those separately.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So 16, 17, and 18, we're going to pull out anything else that people want to pull out? Dorothy?
Just want to correct, number two should be commission on aging well, please.
All right, little typo there. All right, anything else? All right, then, all in favor of approving the consent agenda except for 16, 17, and 18, say aye.
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 And oppose nay. All right, and now Sarah, 16, 17, and 18, would you want to add to that?
I just would like them referred to Public Works at Misty's suggestion, just that they are public construction.
All right, so do you want to do a motion to approve with adding referring to board or public works? You can do all three at once, too.
That would be fabulous, yes. I'd make a motion to approve just with the addition of referring to Public Works in addition.
All right, is there a second? Second by Tom.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 And oppose nay. All right, those are also approved. Next up, administrator's report, Mike.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. In response to COVID, taxpayers wanting to make an in-person property tax payment should make an appointment either online through the city's website, or by calling the office at 608-270-4270, and select option six. That's again for property tax payments. And I'm happy to report that the holiday light tour was a big success. Here's some numbers from Lisa Sanford, who helped coordinate that. Fifty homes participated, three businesses participated. There were 10,500 people that reached out on Facebook, Fitchburg Star, Fitchburg Chamber, Things to Do in Madison, and other advertising outlets. Nine hundred and fifty people were interested in the event on Facebook. There were 796 votes cast for favorite. Signs for yards were donated by Cinerama and the UPS store, so thanks to them. And then Lisa added lots of vehicles driving slowly around the neighborhoods, dome lights on, flashers on, neighbors outside, even a limo bus spotted, tons of positive and heartwarming comments on Facebook, many emails and voicemails thanking us for this event from residents and sharing hopes of continued years for this event. Lisa said after the event, she received emails and voicemails from people not able to attend the event on 12/19, and therefore looking for the map and addresses of houses to tour on their own. She sent a newsflash on the website and posted on the city Facebook page, the links, and the lights and the displays throughout Fitchburg, she says, were fantastic. So thanks, everybody, for participating and for Lisa and other city staff for organizing that. A unique event in this kind of unique COVID Christmas year, year, or holiday year. Then I wanted to add on continuing the holiday theme here. Weather permitting, a second holiday tree collection will take place the week of January 18th. Trees should be at the curb by 6:30 a.m. on Monday morning of the collection week, and Trunks Facing Street. All decorating material must be removed. Flocked trees are not collected and must be disposed within the refuge, with a refuge tag attached. Please do not allow trees to become covered with snow. Wreaths and garland are considered refus if they are flocked or contain metal or other supporting devices. They add, however, with little elbow grease, real wreaths can be recycled. Remove all decorations and supporting material from the wreath. Take to the Fitchburg recycling drop-off site at 2373 South Fish Hatchery Road, and put the boughs in the yard waste area, and metal or steel framing in the scrap metal area. Ornaments are not recyclable and should be reused or placed in your green refuge cart. Plastic coated metal is also not recyclable. For more information, you can also consult the city's holiday recycling guide on the city website. Then with the Dane County Executive Emergency Order extended until March 31st, we discussed with our city department heads and with the mayor that we're going to continue operating under the current protocols, where City Hall will be available by appointment only, so we'll remain closed and operate by appointment only. Most staff will continue to work remotely at this point in time, and then we'll continue with the meeting protocols as far as face masks and social distancing, and hopefully encouraging people to participate if they can by Zoom for that. So any questions on that, just let us know. And then lastly, I sent an email out to you just with an update from Myers on the development front there, and Myers decided not to proceed with exercising their option to purchase the Winger property, and right now their project, they've withdrawn their project here in the city of Fitchburg. So I sent an email to you earlier today, if you haven't seen that yet. They're still interested at some point in time entering the greater Madison market, depending on available sites, cost, and kind of timing of things. The mayor and I did a follow-up phone call with them, and some of the uncertainty with COVID as far as the timing that they would proceed with construction of a store influenced their decision along with the risks and kind of costs associated with the project at this time because of that uncertainty. Any further questions, you can give me a call, or you could talk to the mayor as well, but that's just an update for you. That's all that I have to report.
All right, thank you. I'll just add that Myers also decided to not proceed with the store they had planned for Sun Prairie. So both stores here in the area, they decided at this point, they're not going to pursue, nor they want to come back.
Yes.
Any other questions for Mike? All right, seeing none, we can move along to plant commission. Tom, you got a couple here.
Thanks, Mayor. The first one is ordinance 2020-023, an ordinance amending chapter 26. It's a sign ordinance relative to flag signs, and what this was, was at the plant commission, was just to...
Can you first do the motion? So you got the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sarah, all right. And plant commission approved, so what's it about, Tom?
It's really just an adjustment for flag poles, and we didn't have much discussion really at plant commission about it.
Yeah, we didn't have anything in our ordinances about flag poles, and so we wanted to make sure we had something just to be safe, and we made sure that this ordinance really allowed the stuff that's in the city right now. There's nothing that is a problem anywhere, but this is something where no one is going to automatically be out of, in violation of the ordinance. We did add something in here where someone could apply for a waiver if they wanted a conditional use permit to do more than the signs allowed. It's one for businesses and, or, I'm sorry, one for residents and three for businesses, but if something like the Veterans Memorial wants to do a bunch of flags, for example, which you've maybe seen at other Veterans Memorials, then they can apply for that waiver. Other questions? All right, Dorothy?
What kind of restrictions are there on content of what the flags are? I presume American flags and state flags and maybe military flags or whatever. But if we have three businesses putting up three advertising signs, does that end up getting covered in our signage ordinance, or are they free to do that?
I believe that would be part of our signage ordinance. We didn't ask that question. I don't know if you have any insight, Mike.
I would just say the examples that I'm aware of, like Tri-North and PlayCon, they have the U.S. flag, the state flag, and then they have like their own company flag, is kind of what I've seen in some of them that have the three flag poles at this point in time.
So I guess right now, people do have their business sign on there, so that is something that is currently allowed?
Yes.
I'd like to see it be addressed as part of the sign ordinance, or something on that order to prevent potential abuse.
Okay.
It can say one of three can be a company sign or something on that order.
All right.
I can check in with Sonia and planning staff on that and Lisa, and just ask the question.
Yeah, I think we probably have to be a little careful in restricting free speech. I think there's probably some kind of warnings with stuff like that as well. But, you know, I think that there's also a difference between the, you know, these are signs on a flag pole versus kind of the temporary sign, someone can just put it in the ground type of thing as well. So I guess, yeah, I don't know how the free speech thing really impacts that either. Other comments or questions? All right, seeing none. Then I guess we'll, oh, there's nothing else. All in favor of approving, say aye.
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 And oppose nay. All right, that is passed. Next one, Tom.
The last one is resolution, it's R1221, CS237220, resolution approving certified survey map request. CS237220 by Norbert Taurus Saint II accomplished a lot line adjustment on properties associated with 5838 and 5844 Timberland Circle. These are lots 105 and 106 in Seminole Forest. I'll move approval.
Second.
Seconded by Shannon, and plant commission approved. Do you want to speak to this, Tom?
What these were, was really cleaning up the CSM, and they were just correcting the lot lines or property lines. And this, the individual wanted these two lots for sale, but they had to be adjusted so that it was done right, and we had five conditions along with it.
Yeah, they have a house on one of the lots, the other lot's empty, and they had added like a deck or a porch, which encroached on the lot line, so they just had to adjust that because they want to sell the empty lot to someone else. So clean it up. Other questions? All right, seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
And oppose nay. All right, that is approved. Public Works, Sarah?
Yeah, based on Mike's comments earlier, I'd like to make a motion to table indefinitely Resolution R220, approving the agreement for subdivision improvements in the Winger CSM. Second.
Second by Dorothy, and yeah, this is just related to Meyer, so it's not necessary. All right.
Correct.
Then all in favor of tabling indefinitely, say aye.
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 And oppose nay. All right, that is tabled. Is there anything else on Public Works, Sarah?
No, thank you.
All right, what about Park Commission?
We met on January 7th, and we did discuss the resolutions that will be at the next budget, or excuse me, at the next council meeting regarding the recreation budget. And then just, I guess, one update is that they did release that the Rec Department is putting on a virtual father-daughter dance on Sunday, February 28th. The registration deadline is February 1st. You can find it on the website, but they're giving craft supplies and a DIY masquerade mask, so there's a nice working or having to be home and still having some recreation as an event, and just that the next meeting is scheduled for February 4th.
All right, Library Board, Randy?
Library Board, we have not met because of the holidays, but we will be meeting next Wednesday, the 20th, at 5:30. And the only update that I have is that the library will remain closed through at least April 7th.
All right, thank you. Commission on aging well, Dorothy?
Thank you. We will be meeting this Thursday at 8:30 in the morning, and the main topic will be discussion of the Dane County contract for senior services.
All right, thank you. RCC, Gabriella?
Yeah, I have several things. The first is that Fitchburg was named a 2020 climate champion by Dane County. There's actually a pretty good article on it in the Fitchburg Star on page seven that came out. It should be in your mailboxes already, the January Fitchburg Star. And I actually wanted to see if I could show, I know we've been having some computer problems tonight, but I was going to share the screen because there's actually this great website that shows the different sites all around Dane County that were recognized, and I'm going to share it and see if that works. Can that be seen?
Yeah, it's popping up right now.
Oh, magical. Okay, so this map here, I zoomed in on the Fitchburg area, and we had three sites recognized in the energy use category, the Fitchburg Library, the Fitchburg West Fire Station, and then the Fitchburg East Fire Station. And you can see where they're located on the map, and we were also acknowledged in water savings for the burn, for the burn pond retrofit, which is coming very close to completion. And we're looking actually to put some signage up explaining how the burn pond works, and you know, how it's been changed, so that neighbors in the area have a sense of what it's doing. And this is actually pretty extraordinary because we actually got four separate sites recognized. There were a couple other people that hit the four level, but it was pretty incredible. We are kind of at the top of the list for this, and look forward to being recognized potentially more in the future. And then a few other items on RCC, we had, our meeting was actually last night, and we had a great presentation about the Dane County Climate Action Plan. Executive Parisi actually was there. There is a great, if you are interested in learning more about that plan, there is a website, dainclimaction.org, has a lot of information there. In terms of this year, we're looking at potential doing public outreach events, but obviously COVID is sort of still an unknown. So we are planning to not do a spring recycling event, like it's typically done, but we will try to shoot for one in the late summer, early fall, if it is all possible. So we'll try to get some target dates out there, and hopefully we'll be able to do a recycling event this year. And then we also had quite a long discussion about recycling service in the city. And I'm not sure that everyone realizes, but Fitchburg actually has some pretty extraordinary recycling services that we provide to residents. A couple things that you might not know of. We actually have unlimited curbside recycling, so if you can't fit all of your recyclables into your bin, you can actually put all those extra recyclables into a clear plastic bag, up to 32 gallons and no more than 50 pounds. I'm told that both Pick and Save and Home Depot have these clear plastic bags for purchase, and you just put it right next to your recycling cart, and you can actually put multiple bags out. It's not just one. And the recyclables are collected at no additional charge. And then we also have that recycling drop-off site that you may have heard of off of Fish Hatchery. And we accept only limited things, but white block polystyrene, which is actually pretty rare for a city to accept that in the area, oil filters, motor oil, cardboard, scrap metal, non-invasive yard waste, and then also bagged invasive species. But I will make the note that this is for individual Fitchburg residents only. It is not for contractors. We recently put up signage last year to make that clear, and it's not from residents from other cities. So if you do see any sort of illegal dumping when you're there, if you would please report it to the Public Works Department, that would be very helpful. And that's all for RCC.
All right, thank you. What about transportation and transit?
Yeah, so we actually have a meeting this Thursday at 6:30 p.m., and we're going to be focusing mostly on public transportation. There is a great memo in the agenda packet from our new senior transportation engineer, and I will plan to do probably more extensive updates throughout 2021 because I expect that this will be a topic we will cover quite in-depth in transportation and transit throughout the year.
All right, thank you. Seda, Julia?
Yes, I have a couple of things too. We met on December 12th. We discussed a Fitchburg business license. So that one was the initial talk about if we need to, in the future, we want to implement a business license. Angela Kinderman and Amy Mercer were also on the call, and it was determined that the issue was really about the way to share information between departments and how we could accomplish this. Mike also suggested having a meeting with the departments to collect data about properties and businesses to see what type of data they collect and ways we can share. It's like sometime, some of the departments are working like in silos regarding, you know, when a new business come to the city, so, and they have to, also to be able to collect the personal property tax, especially businesses that they don't need any other permit. So that one was the first discussion to determine is something that we want to pursue and how we're going to do it. And then, so Mike is going to follow up with that, and to have a meeting with the head of the department. And then we have a presentation from Cindy Jaggi. She provided an overview of the activity for the VRBC, which was dissolved at the end of 2020, but she also is in charge of the Fish Hatchery Corridor, and she came to the meeting to, you know, she was virtual in the meeting, but to discuss what are they, what are they, they are doing with this corridor and helping the businesses and residents in the area with the construction of the road. The other thing that we found out was the hotel room tax collection were down 70% compared to, in the third quarter, compared to the previous quarter. So that one is a big hit for us because most of the hotel room tax, remember that we have a ratio that part of the money go to the Fitchburg Chamber of Commerce, and the other one go to fund the Seda budget. So, and we expected that the fourth quarter for 2020 is going to be almost kind of the same. So we talked about the Business Boost Loan, so, and the repayment of some of the loans will begin in January 21. And also Angela Kinderman with the Fitchburg Chamber provides Seda with an update on the Chamber activity during COVID. The Chamber has a very robust COVID announcement and resources on the website. I know you have been in the Fitchburg Chamber. They have a lot of good information there. So, and then Mike continued to work to retain the postal contract stationed in Fitchburg. You know that we have a postal office, and I was there buying some stamps and some packages the other day. They are going to be open until March, so we need to determine what we're going to do because we really need to keep the postal services here in Fitchburg. And then Stop and Go has been sold to QuickTrip, and then you see the Stop and Go that is in the Fish Hatchery Road is almost gone, you know, they, you know, so what else? And also the radio station property that is for sale at the corner of Lacy and Fish Hatchery. Staff has spoken with several interest parties, so we have a lot of traction in that corner. Moody's affirmed the city AA1 rating. This is good, okay? And the other thing that is very interesting, and I really like this moving forward, is that staff is moving forward with the Affordable Workforce Housing Pilot. You remember that we have one on the committee, the whole, we have the presentation. So we are moving forward with those housing pilot programs, so that one is great. You also want to mention, as you know, I am also board member of the MARREP, and then MARREP has a new CEO, it's Jason Fields, and Seda will extend an invitation to, for him to come to our meeting, and because we have a very good relation with Paul Jaden, the actual CEO, that is, is, you know, he's free, he's doing a transition with Jason, but he's going to be done with the organization in February. And then we want to have the same relationship with Jason Field, especially in the, you know, because MARREP is an organization that are always connecting site selectors with municipalities, so we need to be there working hands on hands with him. So that's it for now.
All right, thank you. Ag and Rural Affairs, Randy?
Ag and Rural Affairs has not met, so nothing to report.
All right, how about EMS, Shannon?
We didn't have a meeting last month. We'll be meeting next Thursday.
All right, what about Bicycle Committee, Joe?
Yeah, tomorrow, myself and some members of the committee are going to be meeting with somebody to learn about a, excuse me, I have a toddler in the background, learning about an eco-counter for the city. We're not committing to anything, but it's just sort of to hear the options and kind of hear what it's about. We currently don't have one in Fitchburg, and this is according to the chair, Mark Hamilton, is that there is 75% of gold cities and 100% of platinum cities have eco-counters. So this is part of the plan to make Fitchburg into a gold city.
Can I ask a question? What is that, Joe?
So if you're on the, like a bike trail or path, there's like one of these little machines that counts how many people pass by. There's one on John Nolan. There's also one on, right by Regent Street, by the stadium, just to kind of get a sense for where they are. And, you know, again, we don't have one in Fitchburg, so.
All right, anything else? Looks like no. Tree Advisory?
No report.
All right, what about Landmarks Preservation?
No report.
All right, what about Housing Advisory? Oh, I've been that spelled wrong, but Housing Advisory, Dorothy?
I circled that typo, so thank you for noting it. We did not meet since December 14th, which feels like a zillion years ago or so. But we had Madison Development Corp. talking about affordable housing fund. They are making private loans to add to developer ability to build missing middle housing. So not the public housing sort of thing, and not higher end, but the worker B-housing. So that's extra help for that, for developers. We talked accessory dwelling units, and the decision that day among us was no decision. Mike Joyce and Sonia is going to bring back consolidation of our thoughts and add to that to our next discussion. And there was a little bit of note about developers wanting more engagement and help from electeds. Sometimes it's electeds that tend to be not as willing to talk about projects as the developers would like them to, but they would like us to be more of a bridge to the community and help them out a little bit. That's all I have for now.
All right, so what about Healthy Neighborhoods?
I'm going to let Julia take that one.
All right, Julia?
You're muted.
Okay, we have a meeting in December. I don't remember the date. Okay, we have a meeting, um, in December. I don't remember the date. Um, we decided, um, make some changes to the, you will see those changes coming in one of the resolutions, so I am not gonna go in detail. So, uh, we want to increase the, um, the project award maximum to $15,000. And then we, we, we refine the pro, the grant program categories. Um, so, um, so the following category are the one that we are gonna, uh, you know, um, we want to, uh, the program, uh, to be focused on youth mentoring, youth education, adult education and workforce development, food security and neighborhood, community building and engagement. And also we discussed, uh, what we're gonna do with the money that we have for the Fitchford Fund with United Way and some of the, this, you know, uh, residual funds that they were not used last year. Um, so it's something that we, uh, decided that, um, we want to, um, to use some money, uh, transfer that money to the teen survey, uh, fee that that one is gonna come in March in another resolution. And then, um, we discussed about, uh, the new 2021 program timeline. So starting in January 16th to February 17th is the new, uh, 21, uh, grant process is open. And then in February 17th, uh, so the eligible grants will be due to the Community Development Planner. And then by early March, the Healthy Neighborhoods Grant Program Committee will review the application and make funding awards recommendation to council. And then around mid, late March, uh, council will review those, uh, recommendations for the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative Program, uh, committee, uh, make the, the final award. So, so, um, yes, I don't know if I forget something else, but practically this is what we discussed.
All right, did she miss anything, Dorothy?
Oh, she done good.
All right.
She made the mistake of asking Wade for minutes.
Oh, um, can I, can I add to that?
Sure.
Um, there's still an opening for, um, a member. And I, I saw we got an application in, but I just wanted to let the public know it's, uh, for the, for somebody who either works in or lives in the neighborhood west of Roanoke Road.
All right, thank you for that. Um, moving along, Finance, Julia?
Okay, in Finance, we, uh, in Finance Committee, we, um, Misty presented, um, the update of two, uh, reports. And then we approved deals, the detailed review of all check issued, check number 12146 dash 121572 dated December 1st to December 31st, 2020, totally 3,814,963 with 22 cents. And then also we reviewed the detail of all ACH payments dated December 1st to December 31st, 2020, totally 205,068 dollars with 79 cents, nine cents, yes, okay? So then, um, I have a couple of resolution and I need a, um, I need a, I need approval of resolution R dash 27 dash 20 as a resolution authorizing payment to Verizon Wireless for a monthly service charger for 2021.
Is there a second?
Again.
Signed by Gabriella. What's this about, Julia?
So this one are, you will see a couple of these resolution. They are pre-approval of our annual contract with this, uh, service company. And this is for the, um, you know, the, the Verizon, the phone system, um. Yes, see, yeah.
Okay, so annual charges, do this every year.
Annual charging, yes, correct.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none. Oh, sorry, Gabriella, go ahead.
That's okay. Uh, I just wanted to make a note for Tracy and maybe the administrators, the, I noticed this on page 250 of the approval sheet. The names are in the wrong spot, like Lisa Sanford is listed as under mayor for approvals. And this happens over several of the approval sheets throughout the packet. And I don't know if the hell, like if this is like a legally binding document in any way, should perform, but I just wanted to note it.
Which one?
It, page 250 of the packet. I'm sorry, page 250. It's the, it's that resolution. It's just the, uh, pre-approval request sheet.
Ah, pre-approved.
If you look at the approval section, the names are in the wrong. They're like, it's the wrong people under the wrong header.
Misty, I think I know why, but do you wanna speak to this?
Sure. So, uh, the mayor has actually delegated that authority to Lisa with his permission separately. So she's the one that clicks the button and is the one that's recorded it on base, but it's based on permission from Aaron to make that signature on his behalf.
Got it.
Yeah, what happens is like Thursday morning, it'll come in and I'm at work and so I can't approve it. So I'll email Lisa and say, can you approve this for me?
Got it, okay. All right, just the first time I noticed it then. Okay, great. Then everything's good.
All right. All right, and all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay? All right, that is approved. Next one, Julia?
So next one is a resolu, is, I need a, um, I need, um, oh, approval of resolution R dash 218 dash 20, a resolution authorizing payment to Wisconsin Independent Network for monthly services chargers for 2021.
Second.
Signed by Randy?
So this one is another pre-approval, uh, for our internet and fiber services.
All right.
For 2021.
Any questions on this? Seeing none. No, in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
And opposed nay? All right, that's approved. One more, Julia?
Uh, needs approval of resolution R dash 222 dash 20, ESRI Enterprise License Agreement Renewal.
Give a second.
Second.
Signed by Gabriella, all right. Anything additional, Julia?
This one is, uh, this one is the approval of the software, the, uh, GIS, uh, software that they're using for mapping and they're using for several of our departments. And it's a three-year, uh, contract agreement. Uh, so it's another pre-approval, contract for three years.
All right, any questions on this one? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay? All right, that's approved. Anything else, Julia?
No, there is a lot of, uh, direct referral coming later.
All right, sounds good. Personnel, Dorothy?
No report.
All right, Public Safety, Sarah?
No report.
All right, uh, to Mayor's Reports. A few things here. Uh, one I just wanted to mention, uh, if you see, uh, a lot of COVID numbers in Fitchburg, there was a breakout, um, at Oak Hill, the Correctional Institution, uh, institution down on the southern edge of the city. That's where a lot of those are from. Unfortunately, they did have a lot of cases there. Also, earlier today, we heard in our department head meeting that there is a low inventory of single-family lots available right now in Fitchburg. So the things that are out there are selling really fast. Fitchburg is the place to be. And you've seen that with how many homes were built last year and will continue to be built this year. Joe mentioned the Healthy Neighborhoods. There are a couple of boards and committees that are open right now and more will be open. So if anyone's watching and they're interested, most of those I'm gonna point, you know, coming up in April, though, I was just thinking about it, I might need to do Healthy Neighborhoods now just so we don't miss when they actually review all the applications. So I might actually have to do that, uh, pretty soon here. But also as part of that is redistricting committee. So if you have interest in that. Uh, let's see, also just wanted to, uh, congratulate Randy. He was named the Regional Representative on the Madison Transportation Policy and Planning Committee. And so he is going to, uh, represent us on that group. And then, uh, other than that, I don't have too much else right now. So I can go to the Alder Reports and I think we're at District 1, starting for the start of the new year. So Dorothy, do you have any updates?
Not real specific, other than it's kind of a crazy world right now. We need to take care of one another in as many ways as we possibly can. A lot of people are hurting physically. A lot of people are hurting financially. Lot of people are hurting emotionally. Um, we need to be aware of one another and help one another as much as we can.
All right, thank you, Joe.
Um, surprisingly, I have no updates.
All right, Gabriella?
Uh, a couple of things. Um, just the post-holiday notes. I, I know that this happened in the administrative report as well, but I just wanted to reiterate that, uh, the last, um, holiday tree pickup is the week of January 18th. And so trees should be at the curb by 6:30 AM on Monday, trunks facing the street, and all decorating material must be removed. And flocked trees cannot be disposed of this way. They're actually technically refuse. Uh, and then also there's holiday light recycling in the lobby of City Hall. So if you have, you know, old damaged lights and you can't, you don't know what to do with them, bring them to the City Hall lobby and they will be recycled, uh, for you. Uh, and then just a couple of notes in terms of looking forward to 2021. I think a couple of big issues are gonna come up, uh, over and over again. And from those will be tr, public transportation. Um, cause in terms of dealing with our public transit system and, and our contract with Madison Metro, that's gonna be a big topic for this year and something that we're gonna have to deal with in the lead up to the budget discussion this year. And then also I think stormwater is gonna be a big discussion point as well. So I'm hoping to kind of give regular updates as part of my Alder Reports. And then I will also just say I, I do keep a blog and, uh, send out regular e-newsletters. So if anyone's interested in receiving that, you can check out my website, gabriellagearhart.com. Thanks.
All right, Julia?
Okay, so, um, a couple of things. Uh, first I want to, um, inform that the ice rink in Mackey Farm is open. And this is, um, you know, I was able, I was walking on Sunday and I saw a lot of people there enjoying the activities. So this is great for the city. Uh, and also, uh, you know, I invite everyone to, um, to do winter activity. We have the Nine Spring Golf, uh, that where you can do, um, you know, cross, cross-country and also, uh, snowshoeing, uh, activities. Also, I want to congratulate because the winner of the holiday lights was, uh, in District 2. So Marv Beach Road, uh, Street. So, um, the other thing I want to mention that, um, Gabriella, myself, uh, Wade, we're invited. We are planning to do a presentation for Sierra Club on Saturday talking about, um, our parks, uh, especially the hub and the inclusive playground. Um, and they are very, you know, they're very interesting how the city of Fitchford is investing in this type of, um, parks. Uh, and then, um, so they want to, um, they, for some reasons, one of the members wanted one of the park meeting and they heard me and some of the other projects coming and, and they want to share this with the rest of the members. So, um, so that one is a, I think is a good PR for the city, um, because we are doing great thing, especially in our park system. So that's all.
All right, uh, Shannon?
No report.
All right, Sarah?
Just a couple of things from emails that I've received recently. A friendly reminder to not leave your car unattended and I know it's fun to warm it up, but please just don't leave your car unattended. Next, please clean up after your dogs. Receiving quite a few emails, just that obviously people are just getting out and walking their dogs as much as possible, but just make an effort to clean up after your dog. A call out that the chocolate shop recently moved to District 3 and that it's located on Research Park Drive. So, um, cho, our ice cream always makes things better. And, um, I did, from Mike's update, I did schedule my property tax drop off and that it was really convenient and slick and that, that was really fantastic. So encouraging everyone to use that scheduler online if they would like to pay their property taxes, um, in person. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Randy?
Uh, a couple of things. I'm going to echo Sarah's comments regarding the paying taxes, uh, scheduling online. It worked very well. Uh, I was in and out in just a few seconds and very little contact or distance was maintained. So, uh, it, it worked out very well. Uh, there was a, uh, an issue that was brought to me regarding the Summer Glen Park. The snow was removed along the sou, southern edge of the park and a number of constituents reached out, uh, out of concern. And when, uh, Scott Endel answered the question that ash trees are being removed and in order to not destroy the gray, this is the best time to do it. So, uh, most of the constituents, that was a satisfactory answer for them. And, um, the fall, or I should say the spring, the, um, the grass will come back and, but it, for some reason, it should not, parks will care for it. And just to reiterate the, uh, the mayor's comments, I was appointed to Mad, uh, as a regional rep to the Madison Transportation Policy and Planning Committee. So that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Tom?
Um, I just have, the plant commission, unless there's a change mayor, will not meet next week due to the lack of agenda.
Correct.
Is that right? Okay. Got that out there. Um, the next one is Gabriel wasn't here then, but I've got a number of people asking me about RCC having to do with, um, the spring. People really like to, there was a recycle. Oh, it was probably two years ago now, but it was so well attended. Um, and what happened is people could bring TVs, electronics, shredding papers and, um, important documents. I don't know, I just wanna pass it on to you that, uh, it is important to have something in the spring of the year. Um, I know how important people start cleaning out their house and, um, it does, people really like that. And they don't wanna see them leave it down at City Hall recycling. They dump it there. Just food for thought, that's all.
Could I respond real quick just in case anyone has a question?
Sure.
Well, I just wanna say that, um, we are gonna try to get one on the calendar for late summer or fall. But I do believe you can schedule pickups from Palatary for special waste. And the Recycling Guide on Fitchburg's website actually has a lot of resources for how to recycle specific things. But yes, I, we're trying to get a, a recycling event back on, but it's not gonna be the spring. I think it's gonna be late summer, early fall, uh, at the earliest, but, um, but the RCC is planning on it.
Anything else, Tom? Good, all right. No unfinished business. Uh, onto new business, direct referrals. There are more than usual since we didn't have our meeting at the end of December to refer some of these out, but they did go to the relevant committees. Uh, so we've got some finance ones. Uh, Julia, do you wanna start here?
Yes, uh, so I need approval of resolution R dash 04 dash 21, authorizing the purchase of extrication equipment for the fire squad.
Second.
Signed in by Gabriella. Do you want us to speak to this? Or do you want Chief to?
He's gonna explain what is this.
Chief, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Um, first of all, um, when I paid my taxes, my Fitchburg taxes this year, I, I put in the memo, thank you to all our elected officials. Did you guys get that?
No.
That will thank you. So, uh, the mayor already alluded to the fact that the, um, the, the direct referral was sort of a necessity based on, on the lack of a, a meeting at the end of December. We are trying to take advantage of 2020 prices on these, uh, these, uh, tools. Um, and it's gonna save us quite a bit of money. In addition, uh, we, we're saving a little bit more than we thought we were. We had planned on spending about $50,000 on our extrication equipment. We are not going with the same equipment that we had in the past. The firefighters like something better. And we were able to get a lower price at about $33,000. The reason this is important, uh, we're getting the, uh, the squad redone. Uh, we should be taking delivery within the month. Instead of having an onboard system, and those of you that may be familiar with hydraulic equipment know that typically there was a hose attached to it that would then go to some type of pump that was, that was on the vehicle, which limited our reach to a to about a hundred feet. These tools are cordless, they're run by a battery, they're called hydraulic source of the equivalent, and, and we are able to take them just about anywhere to include inside where we don't have to be concerned about carbon monoxide. And the other thing that is important is the fact that technology is changing in vehicles all the time, and the steels and the metals that they're using to reinforce vehicles is getting stronger to the point where it's harder to pry and harder to cut, so we do need to stay on top of these tools, otherwise we can't access the people inside their vehicles, and that, that just sort of worked to our benefit, so I'm pleased with the work that the committee put into researching, something that is going to work for the city, that is ultimately more cost effective, and is going to serve the purposes that we intended.
Is there any questions at all? I'm assuming everyone likes to save money? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay? All right, that is approved, next one.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.
Gabriella, can you read the next one?
I can indeed.
We're going to share the findings committee.
I move approval of resolution R dash one one dash twenty-one, amending the 2020 Capital Projects Fund budget, Lacy MM intersection.
Your second?
Second.
All right, seconded by, there's Randy there, do you want to speak to this, do you want Misty to speak to this?
Uh, I, yeah, actually, I'll let Misty go for it.
So this is a construction project that was included in the CIP in the budget for the intersection at Lacy and MM, the construction contract was approved by council last year, and the project is moving along, as we are wrapping up the project, we are realizing that the funding sources were incorrect, information changed between the time this project was first put in the CIP until now, which changed the allocation of how much was supposed to be paid by the developer, how much by the county, and how much by the city, so this budget amendment is for 2020, because it's kind of retroactive, and it increases the amount for the county's share, it decreases the amount for the developer's share, and then it increases the city's amount, and our proposal is to transfer funding that's available in the overall streets resurfacing project into this specific street project to make up that difference, and it will require a two-thirds vote, because we are using, or changing revenues and expenses.
All right, are there questions on this one? I know we're getting a lot of money from, I think it was a grant, a safety grant to help pay for this.
Yes, yep, we had a decent amount of aid to help pay for that part, too.
All right, seen, oh, yeah, Sarah, go ahead.
Just since this hasn't gone to works, was there any feedback from Bill or any concerns of this, or any comments?
Yeah, Bill was the one that realized that the recalculation needed to happen, so he's in the loop on it, I asked him if we needed to take it to board of public works, and since it was just a funding item, he thought he could just report back instead, so the project is happening as planned, the contract happened as planned, it's just how it's funded that's being changed.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? Seeing nothing, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay? All right, that is approved, all right.
Randy, can you read the next one?
I sure can, you sure you don't want to?
No, I want to share with you guys.
Oh, H and I. All right, motion to approve resolution R dash nineteen dash twenty-one, a resolution to approve a contract with Dane County to accept 2021 neighborhood navigator funding find-
There's-
I'll second that.
Seconded by Dorothy, there's another typo on the word resolution, Tracy, I don't know if you saw that, all right, who wants to speak to this?
Well, this one is something that we received from the grant that we received from the Dane County to fund our two navigators that work with the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative Program, so, so this is the third year that we are receiving this, it's around twenty thousand dollars, so we are receiving money here, so it's good.
Yep, yeah, it's been a good program for the city, all right, seeing nothing else, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay? All right, that one's approved, next.
Next, I need approval of resolution R dash twenty, dash twenty-one, a resolution to approve modification to the 2021 Healthy Neighborhood Grant Program.
Second.
Seconded by Joe, all right, you want to speak to this, Julia?
Yes, I have Wade Thompson, he's going to-
Oh, Wade, all right, go ahead, Wade.
All right, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right, good evening, council, yeah, so basically the, these two changes to the grant program came out of a recommendation from the H and I Grant Committee from their December meeting, so again, I think as folks know, our grant program is relatively new, so we're kind of every year want to keep making improvements to it, so this year, the committee is proposing two changes to the program, two modifications, the first proposed modification is increasing the max award from the current ten thousand dollar max to fifteen thousand, and we do have some rationale for that that I can get into if folks want me to, so that's, that's proposed modification number one, number two would be to refine the grant program focus areas, and I believe Julia spoke to this previously, but currently, and there was a memo in your packet that outlines this, some of these changes, but currently the, the program focus areas are pretty broad, are pretty ambiguous, so based on applications we've received over the past three years, based on neighborhood feedback, based on data, we are, the committee is proposing redefining those program focus areas into kind of some more specific focus areas, so those proposed focus areas would be youth mentoring, youth education, adult education slash, slash workforce development, food security, and the final one is neighborhood slash, community building and engagement. So again, the committee and staff feels like these focus areas will better reflect the needs and the applications that we're currently seeing under the grant program. So just, those are just the two changes that the committee is recommending, and I can certainly take any, any questions the council might have.
All right, questions, comments? I had a couple, I guess, Wade, the refining the grant program categories thing is great, two things, and the other point though, one is can you talk more about generally distribute maximum awards, it sounds like you're almost going to favor people that want to, want the maximum amount, just the way it's worded, I guess.
Maybe, maybe that wasn't the best way to word it, but I mean, I think generally speaking, if we do allow for a fifteen thousand dollar max, I think we will probably see a lot of applications that are asking for that max, now, we certainly don't have to give the max, and I think with the way the, the allocation is this year, and if the council does approve a fifteen thousand dollar max award, we will see, I guess I'll call it some awards that are less than, than the max, so that's, I guess, point one, you know, I think another point to look at is, is workload involved with, with, you know, I do the same amount of work, the committee does the same amount of work for a ten thousand dollar award that we do for a twenty-five hundred dollar award, so I think there's some, some efficiencies there that we're trying to, to improve upon, and then I think, you know, another point to think about there is obviously, if we do increase the award, I think we'll see projects that are, will be able to be scaled up, meaning better projects with more impact and more benefit to the city, so I guess to your, your question, certainly we aren't required to give max awards, but I think generally speaking, with our, the way our current program is set up, you know, we've given a lot of max awards, and I would envision that would probably remain if we do up the award to fifteen thousand, so.
Joe?
Yeah, just kind of speaking from a grant making background, it, it, there's also a burden on the grantees, kind of for reporting, and, and I think a lot of the organizations I've seen apply, they have to apply for a lot of different grants, and they have to report differently on all these different types of grants, so I, I think having them, I would be in support of a larger amount, because it would sort of mean they have to look less places, and there's less burden, and they're able to kind of have a bigger impact with the, you know, dollars and the grants that they get.
If I could just make one more quick point in terms of a rationale for this, this modification, you know, again, this grant program is, I think, three or four years old, maybe, maybe four to five years old, initially, we did start with an annual allocation of about fifty thousand dollars, so with a max award of ten thousand, that equates to about five awards a year, four to five awards a year, over the past couple of years, we have increased that annual city allocation to more the range of sixty to seventy thousand dollars, so again, if you, if you look at that ratio of, of grant program allocation versus max award, you know, if we do bump it up to fifteen, we still will be in that range of four to five awards, and I think from a grant administrator perspective, you know, we talk about the categories being redefined, we talk about, you know, efficiency and managing the program, you know, I think four to five awards under the new categories we're proposing makes for a really, a really tight program that really is, is streamlined and, and very specific to the needs that we're seeing in our, in our neighborhoods.
All right, I don't, I didn't see any other hands. Seeing nothing else then, I guess we will go on to vote, so all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay? All right, that is approved, next is, I guess, finance again.
Okay, so I need approval of resolution R dash thirty-one dash twenty-one, adopting the amended emergency sick leave and family leave policy for general employees and emergency responders. Second.
Seconded by Gabriella, all right, you want Sarah to speak to this?
Misty's-
Misty, oh, Misty, all right, go ahead, Misty.
And you're muted.
Unless Sarah wants to, I don't know, she's here, too.
She's on.
Oh.
Fair thing, absolutely.
Oh, okay.
Hi there, so the FF-CRA expired twelve thirty-one, that was the COVID leave for all of our general employees and emergency responders for COVID, what we'd like to do is extend the FF-CRA through February, actually February twelfth, and then bring this back to the committee, to the council on February ninth, to look at extending it as long as there's no additional legislations, we're kind of waiting to see if something else will be coming down the pipeline as far as, you know, maybe additional emergency paid sick leave that we'll need to give, so we'll be looking to extend it again just to February, this allows for our employees to take that emergency paid sick leave if they have COVID or they have symptoms, you've already had about five employees just since January first who've had to be out, so without extending it, they'd have to use some type of personal crew time, so again, we'll bring this back in February if council approves it tonight, just to hopefully extend it then through March thirty-first.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all right, then we're going to go ahead and vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay? All right, that is approved, all right, next up.
Gabriella, can you read that one?
Again, I move approval of resolution R dash thirty-two dash twenty-one, amending the city's 2020 general fund and utility budgets, COVID electric funding, I'm sorry, COVID election funding and utility vehicle, and I'm going to defer to Misty for explaining this one.
Can I get a second first?
Second.
Seconded by Randy, all right, Misty, go ahead.
Included in the packet is the end of year COVID report, so the report that I've been providing to finance committee pretty regularly, there's three items that are included in this particular budget amendment for 2020, and that's why it is a direct referral list, because it's for last year cleanup, really, so the first two items are both grants that we received, one from the Wisconsin Elections Commission from CARES funding, and one from the Center for something, which, both of which had to be used for the election, so this budget amendment will recognize that we received those two grants, and then recognize that we spent that on election cause. Then the third piece of it, at the beginning of the public health emergency, the council adopted some alternate financial procedures that could be allowed during the emergency, one of them was the ability of the mayor to approve certain budget amendments administratively, there was one situation during the year where that happened, it was for a utility vehicle, the price can be a little bit more than expected, and they accounted for it through an additional trade-in of the old vehicle, and then a couple of small transfers from other unused funds, because the policy allowed him to air and approve that administratively with retroactive approval from the council, which is what I'm bringing forward now, and because we are doing revenues and expenses again, it needs to be a two-thirds vote.
Questions for Misty? Seeing none, we can go ahead and vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 And anyone opposed? All right, that is approved, all right, who's going to do the next one?
Randy.
Motion to approve resolution R dash thirty-four dash twenty-one, approving the tax incremental financing amended and reinstated, restated development agreement between Promega Corporation and the City of Pittsburgh, TID nine, and I will defer to Misty as well.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Tom, all right, Misty, what's this one about?
The council approved a development agreement with Promega in TID nine, which is the one over by Lacy and Seminole, the development agreement at that time included one development incentive that had two components to it, one for the facility and one for public improvements that they had to put in, including the Commerce Park extension and some work on Lacy Road, due to a variety of things, the Lacy Road piece of it is getting delayed by a year, but Promega still wants to be able to get their facility infrastructure incentive sooner at, sooner, and then wait to get the public improvement ones till that project is done, and it really is in the best interest of the city to delay Lacy Road by that year, so that's why we're bringing forward this amended and restated agreement, essentially it's the same thing, pretty close, except it's splitting that, instead of being informally two components in the same bond, we are formally splitting it into two separate bonds that would be issued.
Are there questions for Misty? No, all right, seeing none, then all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay? All right, that is approved, and I don't know, probably Gabriella or Randy, do you want to do this one?
I can take this last one, I move approval of resolution R thirty twenty-one, approving the city administrator's separation agreement and general release.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Randy, and I know that Julia Alder Rodifara is going to recuse herself, and so she's not going to participate in discussion or the closed session, let's see, we do have Pat Marsh here, would like to speak from the public, go ahead, Pat.
No comments till after the closed session.
This is the time for public comment, actually.
No comment till after the public, the closed session.
There is no time for public comment after the closed session.
It's, it's an open agenda item, I can comment whenever I want.
Okay, that's incorrect, but all right, we will move forward to closed session.
I've been doing this a lot longer than you ever.
That's how we've never done it, so, all right, then we'll go to closed session, then, if someone would like to make the motion to go to closed session?
I can make the motion.
Thank you.
I move to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes, section nineteen point eight five one C, considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, nineteen point eight five one E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whether competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, and nineteen point eight five one G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved.
And then that last section, too?
Oh, consideration of city administrator's separation agreement and general release.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Tom, all in favor of moving to closed session, say aye.
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 And opposed nay? All right, we are in closed session.
I move to reconvene into
Hold on a second, hold on a second. I want to make sure we get everyone back in for on Zoom. Just make sure we get Julia on. There's Pat.
She was just there. I just had her.
Once we get Julia back, we can, we'll go from there.
I just had her.
All right.
She dived out.
All right, great. All right, go ahead, Gabriella.
I move to reconvene into open session.
Signed by Tom. All in favor of reconvening into open session, say aye.
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 And opposed nay? All right, we are back into open session. Uh, Pat, did you want to speak for three minutes? Pat, are you there?
I am here.
Okay.
No, I just want to hear the debate.
Okay, there, all right. Then there is, is it, anyone want to say, make any comments? And the council? Seeing none, then I'm going to ask for a roll call vote.
Alder Rodafada?
Hi.
You're
I was recused, so I want to
You're recusing? Okay. Alder Clouter?
Aye.
Alder Gerhardt?
Aye.
Alder Crowsey?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Abstain.
Pardon?
Abstain, I
Abstain.
Abstain, thank you. Alder Schroeder?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udel?
Aye.
Six, aye to abstain.
All right, so that passes. All right, that is everything on the agenda for tonight. The next meeting is in two weeks, January 26th, and then commute whole is the day after that on January 27th. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion.
All right, is someone seconding? That's her last motion. All right, same by that. Randy, all in favor of adjourned, say aye.
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 And opposed nay? All right, have a good night, everyone.